I know.
Progress.
It's recording. Thank you. I will go ahead and call the meeting to order at nine one AM. Welcome, everybody. I don't think we need to do introductions. We all love each other. Are there any changes to the agenda? No, hearing none. Any announcements? Hearing none. Since that calendar, do I hear a motion?
You have to adopt the consent calendar as presented.
All those in favor say aye. Motion passes. I also am voting aye. Motion passes. Discussion topics. First up, review and discussion of the performance evaluation process for the county administrator and county council. That's the, so. Right now. As Bishop Malone knows, and the two of you, and as you're finding out. We use NeoGov, which in my opinion is super complicated. And you log in, you're like, oh, I'll just click here and this is where it is. No, it's not.
Okay.
And. HR has to send me a link every time and. Then you get logged out and you're like, I'll just follow this link again. Oh no, somehow it doesn't work again.
I have.
So that's one issue.
Currently been having problems with the training from NeoGov, so.
I'm shocked.
I think for me last year, what happened to me got jammed up is I did all this work on, because we do a lot of work for you ahead of time. And it got raised. And I think that happened to you last year too.
Happened once with Joe.
Yeah, like all this work you put in and then all of a sudden. It gets sucked up and you're like.
And then. Yeah, and so it's. Yeah, so format wise, I mean, you type in there, it doesn't have any sort of like formatting or like. Spelling, you know, hey, your spelling's wrong. And so, I mean, it just, it doesn't lead to a very professional looking product unless you. I'm doing it in a different document and then copying and pasting. And just in general, I think, so all of that aside. The questions on how, then the framework as how we are supposed to. Review. Our two employees, to me, doesn't make a lot of sense. I don't think it's the most. Appropriate or meaningful way. So for example, county council's evaluation. Asks about sustainability. And. I was thinking about printing them out, but you actually can't print any of this stuff from NeoGov, so. It just feels like trying to fit a, what is it, a round peg in a square hole? Or a square peg in a round hole. Either way.
Depends on the size, but yeah.
Morning. With the tweezers.
Okay, so.
Keep drinking the tea, yeah.
I am. Well, I want to do a sort of a temperature check or like a, you know, what do the other commissioners think? Do we want to keep what we are currently doing, or what has historically been done? Or do we want to revamp it in a way that is more meaningful and can focus more on the specific. Aspects of the jobs that we are reviewing for. Thoughts?
Yeah, having. Having the. Deal with NeoGov, couple of years, you know, longer than you. It's. Just been a challenge. And I think part of it is. As commissioners, we see it once or twice a year and maybe they've made improvements in their. Platform. It is definitely a square plate. Square peg, round hole. You know, it's. I think for departments that use it, for people that use it regularly, it's probably wonderful. But. It's, it's been a challenge. So I guess the question is, what are the. Advantages, disadvantages? It's like county-wide system that's in common usage. Apparently, but. If there are options. I would. Definitely be in favor. And this isn't the first time. NeoGov dog ate your homework. It's. Things have disappeared before and. It's not a real user-friendly. Platform. I mean. I don't doubt that some people are used to it and. Works fine, but. Not for me.
Yeah, and in the past, we, I think we. Have typed them out separately in like a Word doc and sent that. And so, I mean. So we could do that. That's one option and still use the same questions or, if you call them areas. Or we could just, or we could completely revamp. To make them more. Yeah, I mean, we could really do anything we want, but one idea I have is, you know, asking, how is. The employee at, you know, doing this and then. Like rate one to five or agree, disagree, new floor, family. You know, that kind of thing. Thoughts, Commissioner Shumber?
I don't have any particular. Affinity towards NeoGov. I don't feel like, you know, I haven't experienced it beyond. A link expiring and me having to talk to HR a few times about it, but. I. It's hard for me to make a determination without knowing what the typical questions are, but if they are. You know, like related sustainability versus related to. The job that, you know, Vance is doing protecting us from lawsuits, so like risk reduction or whatever, you know, I. I would rather have an good, have an evaluation of the job he's. Paid to do and that you're paid to do than just. There's. Random things. So I, I'm okay, I. I wouldn't mind a set of questions that relate directly to the people's, to the employees' work. What's? Job description, that's what I, that's. I know more to their job description than. Other things, so.
The other thing is to, our two employees interact a whole heck of a lot more with the rest of the organization than they do with us. So. In order to, I feel, I feel like in order to accurately sort of. Judge or. You know, speak to their daily ins and outs and their accomplishments, I need to hear more from the rest of the organization. Than just what I see or what I interact with them at meetings or, you know, my one-on-one in meetings. My office. So. I would be in favor of expanding, you've done that a little bit for county administrator and I can't recall if we've done it for county council.
Years ago.
Years ago, okay, so before my time. So I would be interested in. Kind of expanding it more, what do they call it, three sixty?
Three sixty, I think, is a specific process, but the. But. Which I'm not.
Idea.
Yeah, I really do like engaging direct reports in evaluating their managers because. You know, we, we see you in a different light than they see you and sometimes if we have frustrations, then. Like from personal experience with other evaluation processes, like if the governing body has frustrations. Sometimes the staff is like, these are all really good things for us and sometimes flipped around. We. The governing body sees good things happening and the staff is like, I'm, we're being left out and blurred. So I think that. And I don't think that's necessarily happening here, but I do think that that's a really good perspective to have. Is direct reports and. Sometimes even just frontline staff on how they feel, if they feel like upper management is listening to their concerns. So I support engaging the workforce.
Okay. Very good. I mean, right now too. The way we do it is sort of different for each employee. You don't really work with HR for events and then typically with the county administrator, we've worked more closely with HR compiling and. Being in the room, etc. And I think our current county administrator has expressed. A different. Method. Rachel, would you like to speak? Sure, your thoughts?
So. HR is a direct report to me.
Yeah.
So therefore, when you compile your three sixty, those are, that's, you know, information that is. Held and controlled in like HR. So to have the HR director to facilitate my own review. Doesn't seem appropriate. And then it's also something that is not done with the council. So it's not, I think we have a great HR department. I think it's a great system. I have no problem after the review is over that it's, the. Personnel record is stored in human resources, but I don't think that. That it is appropriate for the HR department to do that. So this last year, we. I only have two non-employees that work for me and that would be Teresa and Vance. So Teresa came in and took the notes of my last review. However, still the three sixties and everything that was compiled was, is stored in NeoGo. And so. This was brought up on agenda setting. So I did a little research and I reached out to a couple of county administrators and asked how they. Had their review done and. They have sent me some templates that you're open to review that you guys can look at. But one that was interesting to me was in Washington County. Because again, these take time and work and especially in positions like Vance and I are, and our job changes every day. And priorities change. So even when we will set goals together, sometimes the goalposts get moved because. Events happen, right? And so you may want to rejigger those goals in the middle of the year, which I'm open to, but. The Washington County uses a facilitator called the Center for Creative Leadership. I don't know what it costs, but it is an outside facilitator who comes in and orchestrates the whole work and. I talked to the chair about talking to the chair of Washington County, because it was very important to that particular chair to have a little bit of a. Different type of review process for the county administrator and. My understanding, and I got the quick five-minute description, but the first year, you know, is. One year is, is very intense and the second year is kind of a check-in because it kind of wraps up with the biannual budget. So they. But they also work with. Myself and if it was for Vance as well, where they kind of also give us some tips after we're reviewed. To, here's what also we're hearing for you to, my blind spots that would also, so it's also like kind of a coach for me. Of things that I should be aware of, which I kind of thought was an interesting process. Again, I don't know what it costs. Washington County is bigger than us. But that's certainly something that. Was interesting. So I'm happy to try to collect some of that to have you come up with it. And the only other thing I would advocate for is if we do three sixty to switch it up. Every year. So those that you ask for their feedback. That you. Also look at other direct reports to kind of see a different people and leaders and I think both Vance and I agree like, yeah, we. Deal with a lot of people who aren't necessarily the directors of the. The, the. The departments, so.
You said Center for Creative Learning?
It was called Center for.
Leadership.
Creative Leadership.
Leadership, okay.
Yeah, so. And again, we can, you can certainly talk to your counterparts as commissioners about what they like and. Dislike about the review process, you know.
So a couple of things. One, the, the idea of having an outside entity perform and conduct the. Evaluation, if you will, I think has a lot of appeal. What I like about what Rachel was talking about with the Washington County model is we would get feedback that would help us. Do better from the people we actually work with every single day. And Rachel was right, we have blind spots. We were telling you what we do well, what we do, what we don't do well. I would like to think that eighty-five percent of the employees would agree, but the fifteen percent that say, well, maybe you don't do this so well, but what about this you do? It would be nice to know that. If I think it would help both she and I become better. Not just better professionals, but better. Servants for the rest of the organization. So that I think holds a lot of promise because, I mean, you guys can give us feedback, but you really are looking through a very, very narrow lens. So, so that's one thing. The other thing is the, the current NeoGov system, the way it's set up to input your feedback. Particularly for me. Really is just a glancing blow off the side of the battleship. You don't really get into what I do. The questions aren't designed to elicit information from, from, from me and my department. Nancy referred to sustainability and just, just for the record. I try my best, but with one point five employees. I mean, there's just not much impact I can make, but that is one of five areas that I'm an eye wearer. And it just doesn't seem like it gets to much of anything that I do and I don't feel like that particular topic. Provides you with feedback for me and during the course of the year. You know, I, I am not going to have the, the, the resources to devote a whole lot of attention to that particular topic and just sort of naturally happen. So. I think that's just an example of how the NeoGov system with its, its compartmentalization of the topics doesn't fit. And if we were to get away from that and more toward. You know, things we do for our job description, what people actually see us do day to day, you would have a better idea of how we. In this particular, these two roles are actually performing.
Yeah, I would. Definitely agree that we. We would get a different picture if. Potentially, if, if we had. Department heads. Information and. A more accurate picture of what you do. And NeoGov is. I beat a dead horse. Please. I mean, it's, it's really. Constraining. Here's your box, try to jam your thoughts in the box and. Go away. And it's. Just the. Using the programs. Depending on the year, a serious challenge, moderate challenge. Just using the program, a lot of. I think as we mentioned, chatting with HR, how do I, I'm stuck or. You go eat my homework, where is it now? So I would definitely be in favor of exploring options and. I think we have an opportunity to. Do a better job of. Giving feedback.
Yeah, so Vance's, for example, integrity, communication, service, stewardship, teamwork and managing people. Halftime. Those, I mean, those are all, those are all great things to ask about Vance, but it's just, here's integrity and a blank thing, so. Then you're like, well, what, what is integrity and how do I get there? And like, it's a lot of. And from, yeah, from year to year, you might. Rate it slightly differently because you're thinking of different aspects. I would like to see like. You know, integrity, like. You know, Vance is honest. Or the, the county council is honest, or you know, break it out into like the little pieces so you can easily see like, yes. Yes, maybe needs improvement. I didn't want to say no. Appreciate that. But I think what's important to me too, though, is having a method, having a way that we. Compile a lot of information. And refer to it and have access to it over time. So again, that is nice with NeoGov that we can refer back to it because I think that's important. And I, I'm okay with the idea of switching it up, but I do want to see some continuity because I want to see, you know, if someone rates. And I, we're not, we're not going to know who the raters are, right? That's going to be like anonymous, but if we're seeing, oh, so-and-so, one of our employees needs. Could focus on this area a little more and make improvements there. We can see over time, oh, they have improved or. People are still rating them about the same. Maybe we need to have a more conversation. And let's see. Right now, I'll just note, so with our, is it performance management? Is that the? Anyway, the county has moved away from that. But what I was. Was surprised to learn the first year when I actually opened up the book. The proper way to do it is to be meeting with our employees all year long and taking notes specific to. Their goals and this in these areas and none of us do that. So I'm like, oh, okay. I mean, no. I do not do that and I'm not aware. I apologize if you do that and I just assumed you didn't.
Not formally, but I, I think evaluations should be on the whole year and.
Yes, of course.
Okay.
Yeah.
This is what I remember in the last. Week or two or month. So it's. A more. Accurate evaluation.
Yeah, this lays out a process of like. Each month writing, specifically writing to these things and. I have not done that, so I'll speak for myself. I have not done that.
No, I, I have not either.
Okay, but I do, I agree with you very much that it should be a comprehensive view of the whole year. And again, if any of us have any little issues that pop up between now and then, it's obviously best to. Speak to our employees and work that out versus waiting until the evaluation to. Your own during laundry. Okay, so it sounds like. Commissioners are in favor of moving to a different system.
Right, okay.
So I have not done really anything on this because I didn't want to leap off and do work about. But the board did memory too. So I would suggest, or you can tell me what you think, in a month from now, we could come back to goal setting and I can bring back. Some information that I find. I can look into Washington County, Rachel, if you have stuff you can send us. Then feel free to do that. And if either of you. Have any ideas you want to bring back, you can do that. If maybe brainstorming. Specific areas that you'd want to. Dig into. But yeah, so. What I'm hearing is, yes, let's move forward. And then we can. Have a more. I can bring back more concrete material next.
Sounds good, yes.
I'm leaving it all to Rachel, yes.
We'll put that in your bag. Okay. All right. Rich myself. Well, with that, we can move on to our regional sustainable materials management plan task force updates. Bushon McQuire and Bailey Payne.
Vance, this hurts.
I know, right?
Oh man, that hurts.
So I want to give you an update on the SMMP task force and some related topics. Wanted to start off with, not necessarily SMMP specifically, but some of the things that are going on behind the scenes that I think you should be aware of and. Going to invite Bishop Malone to chime in on some of these things because you've been in those meetings. First one is there was an article a couple of weeks ago about Clean Lane, that is the. Hopefully proposed to be developed, more recycling and. Different, different than just a traditional dump, lack of a better word, down in Lane, the permit was denied. And so Jeff Landini, who is Bailey for Lane County. Yes, yeah, yeah, was the, the permit in the early stages, but. It kind of showcased some of the private sector concerns, which was. Not, I guess not surprising, but still the fact that it got, it's been stalled. And so Jeff, who is Bailey for Lane County. Wasn't overly concerned as how, as how I perceived it, but it is going to delay, but anything like this. I bring this up because if that doesn't go through, it is limiting dramatically our options. And putting more and more pressure on us. So wanted Bailey and Commissioner Malone, did I capture what you thought Jeff was saying in the meeting?
Yeah. There's been opposition from the start, from. The haulers.
Right.
And from a small BUD that is currently collecting. Biogas from a current facility and because one of the main. Changes in this proposal. Post-facility is. Separating, separating out the organics and doing a lot more composting. Sure.
An aerobic digester.
Okay.
Yeah.
And. So I, I think. You try to do anything these days, any change, and there's going to be. Opposition and. Depends on many lawyers, the opposition. Vance left. How many they can hire determines how gummed up the process is. The original timetable was to have this operating by the end of next year.
A little sooner is what they originally predicted.
Right, and so that seemed like a fairly. Optimistic slash aggressive timetable and I assume next year is out of the question at this. Wait and.
Yeah.
Looking at the twenty twenty seven.
And I think that this is why I bring it up to you all. Marion County has lost both of theirs. Clean Lane is kind of getting gummed up. Some of the legal issues is they just want to ship their waste all the way down to Bedford or like. It's, it's just showcasing this is really is a system. This isn't just about coffee beet itself. This, and this is not a tomorrow issue. This is. Coming up now, especially with Polk. They still haven't had a single shovel on the, in the ground and they want to have this up by twenty thirty and they're still not moving, so.
Transfer station.
The transfer station, correct. So anyway, I just bring this up to. How important this topic is on a systems approach, which leads into HB three seven nine four, the, I'm sorry.
Reminded me that. Waste Connection is the. Through their subsidiaries, any back is the vain collector in Lane County or is that just Springfield?
Definitely Springfield, but they also have some of the franchises in Eugene as well. And I'm not exactly sure if they're.
It. Recently, so I think currently. Waste, solid waste from Springfield is being trucked to. Ryan Creek Facility in Bedford. Hundred and eighty miles each way. And because. Of the rate increase to start paying for Link's share of Clean Lane facility. And. I'd love to see, oh, and Waste Connection owns the facility then. So it shows how complicated and there's some large things that are. Involved, but not knowing anything about it. Say a three hundred and fifty mile round trip and. Waste Connection is claiming that's saving their customers money. I'd love to see the math on that. The economic math and then the carbon footprint math.
Yep.
You know, ten mile run, maybe fifteen miles versus. Hundred and seventy miles and we're saving you money. Reason I bring that up and just shows the challenges. Lane County. Government owns. Plainfield. Is the driving force behind the Clean Lane facility. Sounds like a great idea and it will. Sounds like a great idea and it will open up capacity for our region. That's accurate. Once they open, they have to operate efficiently, they have room for more solid waste, which one of our options. Future options.
And if our waste did go there, our recovery rate would actually increase. I don't recall right off the amount, but probably a good eight to 10% recovery rate increase.
Well, somehow in all this, I ran across the recycle reuse rates for counties in Western Oregon and Lane County is towards the top, almost is it 50%?
Right around there.
Okay. Are, are they, oh, Monmouth County is the best? Best recovery rate?
I think Lane County is the best, followed by Metro is a region, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, I could look that up though.
Then Marion County at forty six percent.
We once were, but now we're at thirty one point.
No, Marion County.
Oh, Marion County. That sounds about right. Yeah.
They're, they're third, third best.
Yeah.
And I don't know what we are, but we're about thirty two.
Yeah.
And I was a little surprised, but we don't have the infrastructure for separate, doing a lot of separating and recovery here. That, that would improve if we were utilizing the Clean Lane Facility. Less than a third doesn't seem very good. And I don't know if that makes this fifteenth age or where, where we would be on the list, but I think a lot of our community would be surprised that we're not in the top three even, probably not in the top.
And some of these challenges I think are determined to the House Bill thirty seven ninety four, Representative Fane McDonald's bill on looking at this regionally, kind of taking what we're doing in the S M P and taking it to a state, which we definitely need to address some of these regional challenges. So I checked this morning, it's still in Ways and Means. I don't see a, a hearing yet. So I'll, I'll let you know when that goes through. But the one thing I, I apologize, my allergies are like, I'm hanging on by a thread. I am so sorry. I'm really pleased at this process and to see how it has spurred conversations that I don't think were here before. And that was one of the things that Bailey and I talked a lot about in our interviews over the last summer. It just isn't. And Commissioner Malone, I know you're talking with your counterparts, all your counterparts in Marion and Polk and Lynn and others, and just to have those conversations, especially at the Solid Waste Subcommittee. It's just really enjoyable to start hearing these things and just seeing these connections that are going to need to further to address these very complex systems. So I'm very pleased about that process. So a segment of the SMMP subcommittees are wrapping up. We had the Solid Waste Subcommittee met last week. We got into final recommendations and findings and these, which are just super exciting to get to that finish line and that one. The other three subcommittees are finishing up. We have a final task force meeting on May twenty eighth. And then pretty quick turnaround, RRS and our facilitator will come present to you all on the seventeenth, I believe, in June seventeen. Be more of a presentation, working wonderfully with Ann. We have logos and we're starting to get our templates together and the, and however that booklet, that final presentation and materials will look like. And so wrapping that up in early July is our, is our game plan. And so I'm really looking forward to June seventeenth, kind of coming to you, having that and to let the public know. Now, we're moving forward on this on solutions. I know there's a lot of attention on Coffin Butte and especially last week, but looking at these regional solutions is very exciting. So quite the year that we've been going on on the SMMP process. So, yes.
On, on, you know, the bill that's in Ways and Means, I think it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollar ask for standing up with task force. And I guess I'll pose this as a question. How much does that buy us? Or and it's eighteen months.
That was what the bill says by December of twenty six, I think. So it doesn't get very specific. I have to assume there'd be DEQ that facilitates this. I, you all committed a lot of resources, a lot of the technical resources and research for RRS. I don't know if that could be done in-house in DEQ. Maybe that might give a little more, a little more length with the, with the funding figures that they have. So we'll have to see, but it's, it's pretty bare right now. Jimmy, it's just those two pages are kind of giving the direction. So hopefully that'll be flushed out soon.
So it seems like it's possible. I mean, there's some kind of handoff between our SMMP process, what this task force that the bill stands up. I guess I'm a little concerned about how smooth a handoff that is.
We, in talking with Liz, our facilitator and RRS, we're going to spend time on that May twenty eighth final meeting to talk just about that. I know Rick and Bailey and I had conversations about like, what would happen if we didn't move on? With each of the counties pony up a, a small amount of money and to, at least to continue the conversations, at least the momentum. So we're actually, Liz is going to spend about twenty, thirty minutes talking about that. With the, the legislation moving forward and the task force or without. And what would that, and also even if the task force does move on, there's so much to do regardless. And so that's intermodal and all these projects and opportunities. So we're going to discuss that specific topic on the twenty eighth.
And, and in addition to Lane County, I think our partners, Lynn, Marion, Polk.
And we're even talking to Lincoln and Tillamook as well, because that's a long way to haul. If Clean Lane's going down, whenever Coffin Beach shuts down. Again, Superman doesn't just shut trash at the sun. That, that's going to be a long way for them to haul it out. So including barging, which is what Paul is talking about.
What, what's that?
Barging, barging waste is not off the table. Like, that's, that's kind of where we are. We were losing the system in the Atlanta Valley. So.
I, I think there and I think he goes to Ben County for getting the conversation started and
Absolutely.
Waking our, our neighbors up. Coffin Butte has a fairly limited lifespan and would be really nice to have a plan in place, what comes next. And so, and you mentioned money and I, I think at this point, we do have other counties that I think would be willing to have a financial and a we're in this together kind of commitment.
I remember that commercial growing up, you can pay me now or pay me later. This is you're going to pay one way or the other. So, yeah. Bailey, didn't you say anything?
I'll just say too, back to Clean Lane. I mean, it sounds like there, it's not just out of the picture altogether. It sounds like they're, they maybe what to change, what to do. So if not, then we've learned what not to do, maybe where not to do. And there's always all be other opportunities to do something similar in a different community, different area.
Yeah.
Lee County is in a little, quite a bit different situation than us. Current landfill has a seventy year estimated life lifespan.
Of ours of Coffin Butte, is that right?
No, Lane County.
Yeah, yeah. Well, if the project goes for the Clean Lane project, that'll reduce the volume of garbage that they're processing because they'd just be processing fines and so that, that would, it reduces their volume by like eighty percent. So I expect that, that the landfill lifespan, if that project goes through, would be considerably more than forty years.
I, I heard something like currently seven years with Clean Lane gets it up to a hundred.
Okay, yeah.
Estimates for the future, but not much different types than what we're dealing with on Coffin Butte.
Deschutes County is kind of in a similar situation. They're not within the region that the SMMP has been focused on. I had the opportunity to go over there a week ago. And Deschutes County owns their landfill, but it only has about six more years and the, the other spot that they were looking at building a new landfill, that agreement just fell through. And so they're kind of back to square one, trying to find an alternate site. But a benefit that Deschutes County has similar to Lane County is that they own the landfill, they own their compost operation, they own their recycling transfer station, they own yeah, they, they have a bigger influence on the, they're, they're looking, they have a hazardous waste collection event or facility. So it's they're kind of in a different situation than we are because of the way that they've modeled things. They're also looking to build a material recovery facility so that they won't have to transport all their recyclables to Portland. Yeah. They're looking at a C and D facility as well.
Anything else?
Do you know, we did the back, me clearly coughing, trying to keep my eyes sort of.
Bailey, do you know Deschutes County's reuse recently? Every rate that I was just talking about earlier.
Not off the top of my head, they're higher than we are. I don't recall what their number is, but I can get that for you.
Okay. The, the reason that's important is what's the county's reuse recovery rate and, and then what, what kind of facilities make a county's rate better or you know, what, what's needed to make things work, have, have a better recovery rate. Great.
Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate it.
Next up, we have our discussion regarding Benton Area Transit. Self perform analysis information.
Nick's responsible for the clicker. Good morning, Commissioners. Gary Stock on Public Works and Charlene here is with our Tran, Benton Area Transit as well. She's with Corvallis, but she works for us. We have Nick and Susan here to help us out. And again, this is kind of at the request of the board, looking at operations for that. Options, how do we want to, what do we want to be when we grow up? Kind of look at things. And so we retained Kittleson to help us with that. And they've been anxiously engaged the, the past several months, getting a lot of information gathered up. And it's the opportunity to kind of present that to you. There is a lot of information there and then the hope is that we'll kind of know the path forward. But I think you'll see that we'll probably recommend that we come up with a couple of different alternatives for the path forward. And the timing of that, and we can talk more about the timing later as we talk about the next STIF round in twenty seven, twenty nine. The bill before the legislature right now for possible increase in the transit tax. So there's a lot of things playing into this, but this is kind of the, where we're at now with the information. So you have some kind of idea of where we've come from and, and what we may be looking to do going forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to Nick.
Thanks, Gary. And we have our colleague, Amy Griffiths, online who's, who's watching over us, making sure we're saying the right things. So good morning, everyone. As Gary mentioned, the goal for today is mostly to share the information we've found, gone through and found so far. And then at the end, we also want to talk about what we propose as the vision for moving forward. And that vision is really what's going to drive the scenarios that we develop to look at transit service in the future. You had all those slides in your packet, so I'll try and go at a not too slow, not too fast pace. But if anytime you have questions, please just jump in. Yeah. I'm going to just have to point this. All right. So why are we here? The county requested information on ways to improve or adjust the service delivery model for operating transit system because of challenges working with the current contractor to address noncompliance and a lack of transparency in reporting, as well as an interest in positioning the county to maximize the impact of recent increases in transit. I, I might just require a heavy, heavy push. All right. So the work we've done today, we've reviewed your current services. We've compared that with peers. We've looked at your budget and ridership. We've developed some challenges and opportunities and then we've held a work session with staff to gather their input. We'll talk about transit in Benton County. We'll talk about our peer agency interviews today, some service delivery model alternatives. And then the future of transit in Benton County, which is really that vision that we want to get input on. Think we'll maybe just skip introductions and keep going. All right. So to kind of start things off, thinking about the aspects of transit service is a good way to kind of ground the conversation. These are all the things that go into operating transit or running transit. You have operations, which is, you know, your day to day, the buses moving down the road, picking people up and dropping them off. Fleet facilities, which is making sure you have enough vehicles to operate service. Scheduling preventative maintenance, making sure you have a replacement plan for those vehicles. Your service and capital planning. So looking, you know, one year, five year, 10 years down the road to think about where you might want to adjust service, expand service or reduce service. Administration aspects, so that's reporting, grant tracking, providing reports internally and externally. And then coordination as well, kind of with regional partners and any other agencies that may be applicable. The current services that you provide, you all may be well aware, but the contractors Dialo Bus. There's fixed route service, the Costa Valley that goes from Newport through Benton County into Albany to meet up with the Amtrak station. Well, there's a ninety nine express which goes from Adair Village down to Corvallis. You also offer demand response services. So that's known as Bat Lift. And there's Bat Lift countywide, as well as Bat Lift Paratransit, as well as DD fifty three, which is service for people with developmental delays, disabilities, developmental disabilities, providing rides to work and school. The current structure and services. So as we mentioned, Dialo Bus is a nonprofit contractor providing operation services for Benton Area Transit. Benton County owns and operates the vehicles. The contractor provides drivers, dispatchers and supervisors. Those driver, dispatchers and supervisors use county owned equipment, office space and parking. And then the contractor uses a mix of paid and volunteer drivers. Benton Area Transit is closely integrated with the City of Corvallis Transit Department. The current staffing, you have the Benton County Public Works Director, one full-time program manager for Benton Area Transit, which is a City of Corvallis employee paid for by Benton County. Additional staff support with a program assistant, which is a Corvallis position, split funding between the county and the city, your finance and legal support from county staff. And then a transportation supervisor, who is a Corvallis, City of Corvallis staff person for which the Benton, for which Benton County pays a portion of their salary. And then Corvallis contracts back with Benton Area Transit to provide federally required paratransit. And are folks familiar with paratransit? The requirements for it. So if any, anytime you're operating fixed routes. The requirements for it, so if any, anytime you're operating um fixed route service within a city, you're required to provide um paratransit, supporting paratransit within three-quarters of a mile for people with uh disabilities and seniors. And so if you're operating fixed route service, you have to provide paratransit. You don't have to provide paratransit if you're operating intercity service, so like the Costa Valley or Adair Village, the ninety-nine express. Those are considered uh intercity services by the Federal Highway or Federal Transit Administration, and those uh do not carry the same requirement. All right, so governance uh and approval, Benton Area Transit is a program within the Public Works Department. The Public Works Director is the signa- signatory and executive of the agency on paper, approves invoices um under whatever kind of county authority currently exists. Bat is governed by the County Board of Commissioners, and there's a citizen advisory committee that makes biennial project recommendations. That's the STIF committee. All right, so big picture, we looked at ridership uh and your budget, fixed route ridership has rebounded post pande- post pandemic. Uh demand response is returning to pre-pandemic levels as well, but a little more slowly. Uh you have uh an operating revenues and expenses are about two-point-six-six million. That doesn't include um capital costs, that's just your operating costs. Uh and then we looked at your service area ridership and cost uh with eleven peer agencies that we um use the National Transit Database. They have a tool that lets you kind of find the closest peer agencies based on a number of factors. Another thing we found in relation to cost is that both your fixed route and demand response service costs are below market average. And so if we go to the next slide. Looking at the, this is the cost per hour of Benton Area Transit compared with uh the peer agencies we uh explored. You can see the bat cost uh on the left column and or in the second to left column, second to right column, and then peer agencies, and then the difference between those two. And so thinking about um, oh, that's below the market average, maybe that's a good thing, maybe we're, you know, that that could be a good thing, but if we go to the next slide, um we're also seeing that the rides per hour are lower than those peer agencies as well.
Right. It's time to get up and have a little dance.
All right, if we go to the next slide. The funding uh that Benton County receives to provide this service, uh some of it's federal and some of it's local. So you have uh the federal sources are fifty-three-ten, fifty-three-eleven, DD fifty-three. And then the local funds are the STIF, which is the payroll uh transit tax that Gary mentioned. Corvallis provides contributions um for the paratransit, and then there's a, I think there's a very small uh county contribution. Next slide. So thinking about you receive federal money, what does that federal money come with? Of course, it comes with federal and state requirements. So there's grant receiving and administering requi- administration requirements. Um you have to certify, self-certify, you have the legal, financial and technical capacity to take in those funds and spend them properly. You have to maintain control over your equipment and facilities, and so the Federal Transit Administration is very strict about tracking the lifespan on your uh buses, um when you're replacing them, when you're doing preventative maintenance, as well as facilities, if you have any that are being um paid for using federal funds. You have to have a Title VI nondiscrimination program, which proves that you're not discriminating against folks in the community. You have to ensure compliance with competitive procurement and buy America require requirements. You're responsible for a triennial audit, as well as uh fleet management, which we've talked about. You're the next slide. And so some challenges that we found in in talking with staff and reviewing county documents. There was a federal audit completed in November of twenty twenty-three. Those are generally performed by the state of Oregon. The state um is kind of the uh agency responsible for maintaining federal compliance with uh smaller agencies such as Benton Area Transit. There were eight compliance findings and one advisory recommendation. Some of those findings were repeat findings. Uh and those findings uh resulted from the inability to track or measure contractors' actions to meet federal regulations. And the repeat findings, I think, are worth uh noting because those must have reported on grant applications and uh can potentially threaten funding. So if if you're a granting agency and you have uh two agencies that submitted for grants, one has repeat audit findings, one doesn't, you can kind of um see that you might have an easy choice in kind of deciding who to fund. Next slide. All right, so key takeaways from what we found, uh the current service is a mix of intercity and demand response. Ridership is rebounding uh post-COVID nineteen for both services. Benton County maintains strong partnerships with the City of Corvallis and Lincoln County. The current contractors' operating costs are below the market average, and repeat audit findings and contractor compliance persist in creating uh service challenges. Any questions or comments about that integration or?
Yeah. Uh yeah, uh on the audit, a couple pages back, um one was done November twenty-three and then referred to the previous uh audit. Uh when was that done?
I believe three years, so I think it was November twenty-twenty-ish.
And um yeah, I guess it's a little uh disturbing that uh some of the same challenges uh are are showing up again.
Could you give us an example, like, you know, this sounds big and scary, but if it's something tiny, then I have to put it in perspective.
Yeah, um I think that that's probably kind of a a two-part question, and I think in the in the in the audit eyes, findings are findings. They don't distinguish between the severity. Um and a repeat finding is a repeat finding. They, again, they don't distinguish. Uh in terms of what some of the findings included, um one that I can think of is uh ensuring compliance with reporting requirements. And so we looked at the contract that Benton County has with Dial-a-Bus, and it says, oh, we we're passing through all these federal requirements um through to you to make sure, you know, you have to follow all these rules. And so it's in the contract, but then that reporting mechanism back to the county um is lacking. And so the um our understanding is that the the contractor is kind of reporting to themselves. And so that information needs to get back to the county because the county is the responsible agency here as the receiver of federal funds. Um that's one example. And then I don't know if, Charlene, you want to give another one?
I think they're so, just I don't have them both, I don't have them in front of me, but just to be able to speak directly to them, I would say that they are mostly ADA and Title VI findings that were repeat findings. And and so what happens at a triennial is that they they poll sections from every area of compliance you're supposed to, you're supposed to be following, but they don't necessarily review every area. Uh and so the repeat findings happen to be in certain areas, and those are in our ADA compliance, which is mostly paratransit. And then any service, all transit providers are supposed to have ADA regulations and our civil rights um or Title VI plan. Uh so that has to do with reporting and uh and really an operating function uh that that the contractor is also responsible for.
And do we, does the county have a role in, can we be better at saying, hey, we need to get these numbers from you? Or, you know, stay on top of that?
That is part of the the issue, Commissioner, in that that at that point, um Miss, the previous coordinator had left. Uh that spot was vacant for eight months, I think, at least. Um and so we didn't follow up as best as we could uh and should have. Um the other thing is some of the items on the list have been resolved. Uh and we're really down to just one of those eight still being there, and that is our procurement policy, which is very tricky as we look at F T, the Federal Transit Administration, and what they expect and what we need to have. So we're in the process of trying to get our procurement section updated so that we can then get that checked off before we have the next uh audit in the summer of twenty twenty-six.
Stan's helping with that?
Uh Vance has given us direction.
Yeah.
Um where he wants.
Twitching.
Uh where he wants that to be, but a lot of that also depends on working with ODOT and Charlene because we could easily put a whole lot into that, and we don't need it. So there's just certain areas that we need to look at. One of them, for instance, is when we have a sole source procurement. And basically, the only contract that we do is our contracts when we go out for a new contractor. And that has been the sole source, basically, contract bid forever since I've been here before. So we need to tighten that up a little bit because some of the funds that Dial-a-Bus operates with for bat are those fifty-three-ten, fifty-three-eleven and and DD funds that are federal funds. So that's, we have to, we have to definitely tighten that up.
So uh the audit was done November twenty-three, and so most of the findings have been uh resolved in the interim.
Yes, the actual audit was done in the summer of twenty-three. They just didn't publish the audit until November. And there were a couple that were pretty easy to do, like we had a an exclusion policy that said we could suspend you forever if you had a number of violations. Um apparently, we are not allowed to spin somebody forever, so we had to modify that to, you know, loosen that up. The Title VI, we had updated it, but we needed to do a little tweak to it, so we've since updated the Title VI as well. So a lot of these were already done, but we had the procurement one that was probably the one that was that was still hanging out there and the sole source, yeah.
Thanks.
I'll keep moving. So we did some peer agency interviews. We looked at um the National Transit Database to find similar agencies, kind of geographic area, trips per year, uh service miles, the type of service, and then we worked with the project management team, uh which was Gary, Charlene and Lisa Sheriff uh from the City of Corvallis to identify those three peer agencies. We talked with Lincoln County Transit, Columbia County Transit in Oregon, those are both in Oregon, and then Mesa County uh in Colorado, which provides very similar service to to Benton County. We asked about the type of services, how they expand service, how they do a financial tracking, reporting, training, things like that, and understand, kind of try to understand the challenges and benefits uh with their different service delivery models. So Lincoln County performs uh self-performs, they operate transit themselves. Columbia County previously is a contractor, they now operate themselves. And the agency in Colorado uh used a contractor and then recently switched to to a new contractor. I think we have some takeaways on the next slide. And what we heard was there's different challenges with uh expanding service. So in in one uh one realm, if you're uh using a contractor, you potentially have to amend the contract. Whereas if you're self-performing, um you have to hire staff and purchase vehicles, which can take more time. Uh something we found uh is both models require appropriate staffing levels. And we kind of, so we went through those, all the services or all the things that are required to provide a transit service. What we heard kind of from all of the agencies is that no matter whether you're self-performing or whether you're contracting out, you need appropriate staffing levels because there's just so much to do um kind of as the responsible agency for that. Driver shortages persist uh among both models. We've we've have heard that's generally getting better, still somewhat of a challenge. Uh fleet and facility arrangements vary where the vehicles are stored, things like that, but there's always some shared responsibility. So generally, um the county is performing the maintenance uh on the vehicles. We heard that the relationship to operations staff is important, whether it's private uh privately operated or or performed in-house. Um that relationship just becomes really important. Things that can vary is the budget consistency of month to month versus year to year. So in Colorado, you know, the insurance bill comes once a year, and it's a large insurance bill. And um the county there was kind of like, oh, like, why is this such a large cost this this particular month? Uh we didn't hear that concern, and and so with a contractor, that can kind of be evened out. You're providing a a regular monthly fee. Um in Lincoln County, we didn't hear that concern. They've been kind of operating transit for a long time, so the county commissioners expect it. Um versus year to year, both Columbia County and Mesa County in Colorado had to make changes because their costs went up forty percent year to year. Um so Columbia County had drastically reduced their service, and they brought operations in-house. Mesa County had to um go out for bid again, and we're kind of lucky to find a contractor that could provide the the service at a a reasonable cost. Whereas if you're self-performing, um you kind of have a better expectation of your staff costs are going to go up a certain amount each year. Um your fleet costs maybe remain mostly the same, and so uh it kind of depends on on what's important to you. Service op- services offered in decision-making is consistent among both models. Um county leadership, county commissioners, that's generally the uh kind of approval method. And then uh everyone kind of, again, has limited capacity for service planning, and so um they all kind of do the best they can, and they use a a portion of other employees' time to to assist them. I'll kind of mention this, they all struggle to think about, you know, well, we're we're, we know what we are doing day-to-day, but thinking about two, five or ten years down the road, they really struggle to think about that because they're so busy. And so we developed this chart to kind of um understand of all the different uh elements required to operate transit, how does that differ among the service models? And so you can see operations, fleet and facilities, service and capital planning, administration and coordination. And then we um provided kind of what our understanding of of the kind of level of effort is uh to perform those functions. Uh and you'll see there's not that many differences as you would expect, and we'll talk a little about about this more um in a couple of slides. But generally, if you're thinking about um using a contractor, it's to offload liability or to offload costs or to reduce costs or to make things easier. And when it comes to transit, because the county is a responsible agency, um there's a lot less of that available when it comes to operating transit. If you go to the next slide, and then thinking about um how your service model aligns with your values, and so things you may want to do, we have uh our suggestion for kind of the um how this aligns with values for self-performing, a private for-profit contractor and a private nonprofit contractor. So effort to maintain compliance um is generally low if you're self-performing because you know all the staff, you kind of have everything um available to you. With a for-profit contractor, um it requires that relationship as well as with a private nonprofit contractor. Uh operations control, um the level of effort to adjust your operations. Again, uh with a with a contractor, you can just say, we want more ser- generally say, you know, we want more service here, or and then you pay the appropriate cost. Um but again, it becomes more challenging if you're self-performing. The ability to increase services uh is very similar to that, uh and then annual cost variability, which I think we've kind of covered. So key takeaways from our service model assessment, service should be aligned with values. Additional county staffing is required, I think regardless of of how the county moves forward. Costs will increase if anything changes, but most of the revenue uh is at risk with noncompliance findings. And then uh the nonprofit contractor's service model is below market value. Any questions before we kind of move into talking about the future of Benton Area Transit?
I got one. The noncompliance findings, how long do they last on someone's, on an organization's record?
Every time there's a new audit, correct? So three years?
It's the three years. So if let's just say, for the purpose of argument, six years down the line, we have a contract with someone who has three years before had these, had eight findings, and then the the next audit, they had zero when when they're being looked at for for grant opportunities, all the people see you're zero?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Unless they were repeat, then.
Unless they're repeat, yeah.
All right, so thinking about kind of what we want the future or what you want the the future of transit to be in Benton County. The first thing we want to talk about is, is everything you're doing currently required? Uh and then kind of thinking about the future, moving through kind of what do you want to achieve? What tools do you have to achieve it? And then how can you evaluate that and choose the best option? And so kind of getting down to to the bare bones, does Benton County have to operate transit? You don't. There's no mandate uh that you do, um but we think that the county supports it. We think the residents support it. We think it aligns with your goals, and you receive money to operate it. Um and so we think, you know, you don't have to, but we're pretty sure that you want to. And so we think, you know, you don't have to, but we're pretty sure that you want to. Must Benton County provide demand response service to the entire county? They don't, that's a. That's an option that they choose to do. So you could say, we're only going to provide. Demand response service to portions of the county, or we're only going to do it, provide service to portions of the county on certain days. Must Benton County provide paratransit for Corvallis Transit System? They do not. Corvallis Transit System has to find someone to provide that paratransit, but it doesn't necessarily have to be Benton County. And if we go to the next slide. We don't need to spend too much time on this, but the this slide and the next slide are just kind of the requirements for fifty three ten funding and fifty three eleven funding. I think we'll move through this one, move through the next slide and then go to the next one. So again, thinking about trade offs, could service be reduced in a reasonable way? Should Benton County provide demand response service to the entire county? We talked about that. Should Benton County provide demand response service every day of the week? And so again, the differences between the countywide service versus the paratransit. That paratransit that's required for services in Corvallis must be provided at all days and times that fixed route service is available. So that's Monday to Sunday currently. Benton County provides bat lifts, so that's countywide, Monday through Saturday. There's no requirement, no federal requirement that that has to be the case. And then we've talked about the relationship between Benton County and Corvallis. They're very, very integrated. Could that change? It could. And then in what ways could it change? And so these are some of the questions we kind of went through as we talked with staff and then kind of brainstormed what the vision, a future vision should be. And so as we start to think about limited funding, kind of the first question comes to mind is, well, what do other agencies do? From from our experience and from talking with the peer agencies, they improve the efficiency of demand response and so. They can combine combine demand response trips. So instead of. One person in one vehicle, it's a couple people in one vehicle and there's some trip trip alignment or trip chaining for those folks. For local. That second bullet's confusing. But you can operate fixed deviated fixed route to serve countywide demand response. So the the demand response that's currently provided. Is basically curb to curb, right? So someone requests a ride, they say where they want to go. There's a single vehicle that comes, picks them up, drops them off and then goes and then picks someone else up and drops them off. Other agencies across Oregon, as well as across the country, they operate kind of what's called deviated fixed route. And so that's kind of your more traditional bus that you see in Corvallis. That would, just as an example, it would have a stop in Monroe and say, this is the the approximate time we're going to be in Monroe today. We will deviate up to three quarters of a mile from this stop, as long as you call ahead to let us know. And so it's not quite fixed route, not quite curb to curb, somewhere in the middle. We're working with counties of Eastern Oregon and they've they've had a lot of success with that. And then you can focus on required offering. So that's where we kind of start to think about, well, how can we maybe scale back service or. Still meet our federal and state requirements. But kind of create kind of some more cost efficiencies. Next slide. So thinking about when you use a contractor. You know, with or without a contractor, that's responsible for the majority of the elements of service delivery. What settings are, and so thinking about what settings are contractors most helpful? Generally, you know, our our broader understanding is that when flexibility and staffing is needed to support that service. So either seasonal service or pilot service. And then we have a note here that volunteer, the volunteer model that Dial Bus uses is is very difficult to scale. And so you can think about if you're using. Volunteers, you get a lower cost, right? But if you say, oh, we want more service, you're kind of at the at the whim of volunteers being available to to operate that service. And then thinking about Dial Bus, they're a nonprofit organization that has their own distinct vision. And that could create friction if that vision does not exactly align with Benton County's vision. And so getting back to kind of the future of transit in Benton County, we have a, we have a vision that we proposed and hopefully to get some input on that. But then thinking about what tools do you have to kind of achieve that vision? You have the control of funding, the control of staffing, the control of the service model. Control of service area types and times of service. So those are the kind of different levers you can pull. To make sure you're maintaining compliance, make sure you're providing transit to the residents of Benton County. And kind of doing that all in a in a cost efficient way. And so if you go to the next slide, here's the vision that we proposed and then worked through with staff. And that's provide public transit service to Benton County residents that is fiscally sustainable, efficient. And maintain state and federal compliance. And so we want to hear input from the commissioners. And what we'll do is we'll take this vision and that'll help us start to outline a number of different service options or models. And we'll talk about those with staff and then I I believe we're scoped to come back and talk about those and associated costs in a couple months. But happy to hopefully go back to the vision. Yeah, happy to hear thoughts or comments or.
Commissioners, if I could just time a little bit too, and we're kind of working backwards here with the timing of things. And and again, this is a great time to do this. We we've got time because we're really building this. If if a change would occur. It'd probably be July one of twenty seven, when when the new STIF period starts, when the new budget starts. And and we'll also know here, hopefully in about six weeks. If we do have some additional transit funding, payroll tax coming our way. As they work through the the transportation bill. So we'll kind of have all these factors. Of knowing what our revenue projections look like and that'll factor into whatever decision we might make. But the idea is that we we keep this moving. So that's why when Nick says we'll probably come back in a couple of months. Will, would we probably stick with that, I don't say aggressive schedule, but we don't want to wait too long either. And find ourselves needing more time at the end.
I like the proposed vision is sounds very functional, but straightforward. I do like to see a little bit of like feel good visions. So like if we could add. Professional or friendly or, you know, some kind of like qualifier that means that, you know, we're we're really hoping that. We're doing it with a smile on our face or, you know, that people are happy with us.
Back to the Oregon Legislature, are there specific aspects to the trip? Framework that would directly affect. The bat program or are you talking about? My prediction is there will be increased funding, but we haven't seen the bill yet. So is it the the general, the counties will be receiving more. Transportation dollars or or is there a specific? Part of. The bill that we haven't seen yet that would affect our transit program.
Commissioner, I, and again, I probably know enough to be dangerous here. I know that there is the the transit. Association is proposing an increase to the payroll, the transit payroll tax. So that's, that's kind of the extra revenue that I'm talking about. I'm not sure how much that is or what the latest version is, but we expect that somewhere Benton County as a qualified entity. Will be receiving more transit related funding based on pop the population. Part of that. And and again, that would then be distributed with Benton County, the qualify and the the sub recipients, which are Corvallis. The Lomah. And maybe a couple other sub recipients. So but we do expect that that payroll tax, if it increases, it will result in. Benton County receiving more transit funding.
And and the framework is a significant increase.
It could be, yes.
But but we haven't seen the bill.
They take us back to the proposed vision. One, one thing I take notice of is it's, I mean. Focusing on fiscally sustainable, efficient and compliance. There's nothing in there that speaks to. Be convenient for. People, you know, the the users. And I'm not saying. Just pointing it out. So I'm guessing or I'm asking for other commissioners' inputs. What are your thoughts on it?
Yeah, so I've got a couple things here. Do we currently have a vision for this program?
I don't believe so.
And the purpose of developing a vision is, what particular, what what benefit do you see from developing? A vision for our transit program?
It's gonna, immediately it's gonna guide the scenarios we develop for different service alternatives. And so. Why we led with specifically sustainable is we talked a lot about that with with staff at the work session. And as an example. Corvallis Transit, they expanded service when the stiff funding first came out in twenty nineteen. And they didn't just say, here's how much money we're getting this year, we're going to spend it all this year. They did the math to look out, you know, five or ten years and say, here's how much money we're going to have in ten years. We need to make sure that we're providing service today that can kind of. Account for gradual increases so that we're not going to have to reduce service in ten years. And so that's where our vision comes into play is it helps you guide those scenarios and ultimately like. Helps you make a decision on which alternatives are best. That align with the vision.
Yeah, I, so my thoughts on the language provided. It is. I I agree with Commissioner Wise. It's very utilitarian and it speaks only to our requirements and what is asked of us as the pass through. And not of what we do in service, because this is a service organization and. You know, it's a service that we are choosing, we would be choosing to provide to our community members. And all it says is that we're going to be good with our money and how we do it. I mean, to be the most fiscally sustainable and efficient to meet compliance would be to not have a program, right? Because you wouldn't, you'd be fiscally sustainable, you'd be efficient, there'd be no money, you wouldn't have to do anything and maintaining federal compliance, it's easier to comply with nothing. So that vision doesn't have anything about the fact that we want to have this program so we, so our residents can. Get where they need to get where they need to go. So that that's what I think this vision is lacking and it's an important part for me because otherwise. Why do we have this program? So I I but I appreciate, I'm all about being fiscally sustainable. My degree in industrial engineering is about efficiency. So I I that's, I'm always supportive of that. And yes, we need to have an organization and a contractor that maintains all all of the compliance there. But if if we don't have. The, I I I feel like we're missing a little bit of the the service and the and the heart and and the vision.
Maybe tacking something on the end about our service or serving the community or community needs, I don't know.
Yeah, I I can see, I can see where you're coming from, the value, like what's the value of providing transit and you want to make that include that in the vision, I think. I'll maybe. I just responded to that a little bit, so. Maybe maybe vision is not the right word, but we're talking about the service of Benton area transit. So like, we've already decided that you're going to provide transit. And so that's why there's less of that value statement that you talk about. When you think about. Transit planning as a whole, you kind of, when you develop a long range plan, that's when you would kind of develop your more ambitious vision and goals, right? And so that's why we kind of went with a more utilitarian, but I can see that or hear that you kind of want some more of that value statement in there.
I mean, I I appreciate that, you know, yes, we already made a policy decision to do this, but I. That I would think that it would be helpful to be have that decision reflected in the the vision that we have for it.
What if something did this, provide customer focused public transit service to Benton County residents?
Customer focus, that's good.
So that's what I'm saying, it doesn't have to be like this big deal. And actually, I very much like that it falls out. Very succinctly, you know, physically sustainable, efficient. So, yeah.
I might offer maybe something about leveraging state and federal funding, essentially funding that is not from the county to make sure that you're. You know, having a service plan and operational plan to leverage the dollars that are coming, that are available to you. Coming into the county to make sure you're not. Not using those.
Sure, yeah, I like calling that out somewhere. I don't know if a vision statement needs to get into. Yeah, having that somewhere in our. Whatever.
Also, this is just a personal thing. I prefer state and federal compliance than the slash.
I noticed that this morning. It bothered me this morning. And I resented it again this morning. I I think just giving back to. Your comment, I think that's really interesting that you said we're making, the county is making a policy choice because. As far as we understand it, I don't know if the county ever has made that policy choice. It's just, it's always been something that has existed and no one's ever had the conversation about. Should we or shouldn't we? And we we've talked a little bit about that with staff is that one reason. For the study is that things have just always been the way that they are and no one's ever asked, well, well, is there a better, different way to do things?
Yeah, I I appreciate. That question is, well, we've always done, well, why is? I don't know. So I I I think it's, I mean, it's a. A fair amount of money and trying to. Provide the. Service as efficiently and. Broadly, as we can, as we can. Look for opportunities to. Stand over here and maybe cut back over here because things change as time goes on and and making sure that we're. The service that we're providing is as appropriate as as we can be. So. I in general appreciate. Looking at what we're doing, we've had a fair amount of discussions in the time I've been here and. Going through the pandemic and what that did to. The model and I appreciate, since we haven't got to them yet, but. Charts and graphs about ridership. Pretty well back on the fixed route ridership. I I have ways to go on the optional service. But no, I I. Need this, look at what we're doing.
Some immediate next steps for us is we'll incorporate what we heard today. We'll bring that back to staff to make sure we we get the vision right and then we'll start to develop. Different service alternatives. And so just. I'm not saying these will be the service alternatives, but one, for example, the there's no longer a partnership with Benton County and Corvallis Transit. Benton County only provides what they want to provide. That's that's just an example of what we're talking about. And and we're not saying we're going to go there, but like we're going to explore all possibilities and then start to narrow down. Okay, how do we kind of meet these in the middle? What do the costs look like? Things like that.
I I appreciate all the I G A's that we have with the city of Corvallis and the close partnerships we have on a lot of things. It it is wild to me how many city positions the county pays for and how many county positions the city pays for. Just like, there's a lot of I G A's where we pay for each other's staff. So that's, it is. You know, what whatever makes these partnerships work, but I'm always interested in looking into that and seeing if there's, because it creates weird infused. Loyalties is the wrong word, but like chain of command and some and some weird stuff. So it's. I I always appreciate looking at how to maintain those partnerships in 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 a not confusing way.
Someone that we is on our project has forty plus years of operating transit and. And looking at these types of studies and his his phrase that I like is whatever works, works, right? And it has worked for the county for a long time and the city. Thanks.
Thank you. And I'm, I don't know why I did not touch this earlier, but I'm now realizing that we do not, we normally for goal setting have. And I'm, I don't know why I did not touch this earlier, but I'm now realizing that we do not, we normally for goal setting have uh, commissioner updates, county administrator updates. I don't see that on the agenda, so I'm gonna add that on other, under other. Perfect. So I'm gonna call for a short break. So let's come back in about five minutes. Okay.
That's fine. I've done worse things on. I shouldn't say it was weirder.
But you did.
Uh, commit to my promise to work more closely with our collective bargaining units and had my coffee with some of the ASME leadership offsite. I spending a great deal of time dedicated to budget meetings with Assistant County Administrator Rick Crager, who I can also ask him to give some activities of note that he is up to. We attended the Benton Breakfast along with most of leadership and all three of you in this room. It was our largest attendance, so that was really encouraging. I know we had a tough year last year. It was great to come together and um, I thought the food was great this year, just to make a note on it and we gave out.
Were amazing.
The prizes are great.
Super exciting.
I hats off. I wrote some personal notes to the committee that pulled this together. Bailey was here this morning, Debbie Sessions and a few others. They do really, really an amazing job. Uh, I'm also continuing to do work in finance as well as we start our, continue to work it uh, on our new. Recruitment for the CFO, can't speak this morning. So we're hoping as that works between Rick and I, helping that important department uh, right now. Uh, and we're working in particular on some procurement exercises as well as um, some travel and payroll and audit solutions. So those are also um, active projects that are going on in finance. We, as many of you know and the public knows, we, the staff, that's uh, many of them in this room today, uh, helped community development launch and successfully launched uh, many, many evenings of CUP hearings for the landfill. Uh, it's, I'm happy to report that those hearings went very well. They were professional, they were lively. And I just want to give a hats off to this incredible team, many of them who are in the room right now, as well as IT. That assisted community development, who is down a few folks' bodies to make it as um, open and accommodating to all folks who wanted to be heard and could hear. So technology, all the, all the parts that take part uh, to make things roll. Uh, I just want to give a big hats off to everybody in the room and I know many of you have also given your personal thanks. I participated in courageous conversations along with um, Commissioner Shepherd and Commissioner Wise. The two day um, offsite. Incredible experience that I, I don't want to take all of it out because I think that both commissioners can also speak of that uh, training that we participated in and uh, also got to spend a lot of time with folks that um, many of us don't get the opportunity to because we're in an entirely physical building and uh, made some new colleagues and friendships. Uh, we had a joint meeting of the Board of Commissioners in the city of Albany. Again, I will let the other two commissioners talk about the feedback on that. That's something that kind of went stale for a few years and I think most of us found it very profitable in our time together. And I think we're all committed to trying to do that annually. And the best part of the day on Friday was the courthouse groundbreaking and um, that was incredible. As you know, this has been a great feat and it was a wonderful day. Commissioner Malone could not be there, uh, but he stayed in uh, stayed in contact as we were giving our speeches and um, again, I will let my coworkers and colleagues give your thoughts on, on the groundbreaking. On a lighter note, we planted a Linden tree in North Albany in honor of Arbor Day. This is something we like to do uh, as a goal setting every year. It's a little off season to plant these trees and I just want to make a comment that my PIO staff asked a tremendous amount of questions to our arborist about planting a tree. I learned more about that and again, I think I'll wait for the chair to weigh in on that event, but that was also a very, very nice event. Um, I do uh, have some upcoming activities. I'm going to be doing a tour of the law enforcement building. Uh, it's just something that uh, I haven't really been able to get in, in the back door. So the sheriff and I will be going through that and we're going to look at some of the ongoing issues with that particular building that is located in downtown Corvallis. Professional organization activity, my last note, um, I always am on different webinars when I can attend. Whether it's AOC or the National Association of Counties, but I participated in the ideas exchange and I was asked to speak about our change manager position, uh, even though we have it frozen right now. And they are, we're very thrilled about it. Not only are we sharing the whole country, our struggles with the new uh, dynamic of what's going on and what we can afford, but um, they really enjoyed that. So we shared that job description uh, with our fellow administrators who asked for it. And any way we can help move the needle and stay close to our values, I think that they appreciated the, the idea of a little office of resiliency and change management, organizational change management. When we commit next year to our biannual budget, that position is, remains in the uh, BOC budget. Uh, it is something that we're very committed to, but we're also watching our dollars as we speak. Um, but I just wanted to give you that, that that was a nice Benton County uh, hat tilt to our colleagues that are also trying to uh, lead counties during this, these times. So with that, I open up to questions or I'll take it over to Assistant County Administrator Rick Crager, who has many of the same county activities that we participated in.
I'm not going to add anything much more. Rachel did a great job of covering all the things that are going on. I, I will just sort of echo what she said about the change management component to this, you know, I think as particularly as her and I started thinking about our goals and into the budget process and there are so many opportunities that we have. Obviously, we know what those challenges are going to be as we move into the next planning, but I think it's really going to be incumbent on us to think about how we, organizations do things smarter. About how to be more efficient and we need help and support in doing, doing those things. So I, I think, I think this exercise for me over the last couple of months and diving back into the budget and, and having to kind of firsthand see some of the challenges ahead of us. It's sort of my eyes to, boy, we really going to have to, 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 to work hard on um, a lot of different things and I, I think we can do it and then it's, it's, you know, sometimes these situations sort of force you into that place of really having to look at um, different ways of doing business. The only thing I'll additional I'll add just in, in terms of the budget, um, you know, this has been sort of a, a, a very fast paced process and appreciate just all of your guys' patience uh, on this. We are, I, I told Rachel, I think I feel like I'm one day behind, but uh, you know, we wanted to have all draft presentations done by last Friday and we were missing one. Uh, and so that one is still finishing up, so I still feel like we're a good place. Notice uh, we go out next week uh, in the Gazette Times and uh, thanks to Mora uh, is going to be helping me translate that into Spanish so that we get that into the Gazette Times by the period of time that is required. Uh, we'll also post on our website, on the financial services website um, to get that out there. The budget document itself that we use through the, the process will be on the 9th, next Monday. Uh, that's all on track. Feedback has gotten back from communications. A lot of appreciation for Ann and Carly on their help with that. Uh, and then final presentations will be posted to the website by the 22nd, about five days in advance. So um, working hard to meet all of those. I think we're in a pretty good place. I will just then also finish with apologies, I know, uh, for maybe some of my lack of responsiveness to some of your questions. I just have been so ingrained in the budget stuff. I feel like I've been a little remiss on some of my responsiveness, so apologies for that. But uh, we'll get through this month and uh, hopefully things will start to, to open up as we get uh, a new CFO in place. Ideally, uh, beginning of the fiscal year.
We all understand.
No apologies necessary.
Appreciate your patience. Uh, I will say the last thing, revenue forecast tomorrow.
Yeah.
Uh, tomorrow morning, I think it's usually uh, at eight o'clock. If you're interested in listening, uh, that is going to open up the floodgate uh, of bills starting to move. Uh, so buckle up, here we go in terms of uh, the final, final phases. Thank you, Commissioner Malone, for your testimony on Friday. I think it was a lot uh, uh, different. Uh, but I, I'm glad we got our, our request out there. I think there was support from you all from Osborne Aquatic. Uh, and I know, I believe that Dare Village also spoke testimony, so.
Briefly.
Yeah, so yeah, very briefly. I know it was a fast track, but I think those things are always really important. So uh, I will keep you guys as, as in tuned as I can to things going on, but if you have questions, please let me know and I'll, I'll make sure that we try to uncover any information that you might need as we go through these last days of legislative session. Thank you.
What's the timetable on the CFO search?
Pretty intense. Uh, we've gotten eight applicants so far, but it, it'll probably span to beginning of July. It's like round and round of interviews. We have a whole timetable of.
We have first set of interviews in mid-June.
Yeah, mid-June and then.
So it's closed now.
Right, so if, if we were successful, August. Yeah, if I start date, if, if.
One of our optimist appointments on August 1st.
Yep, that would be, yeah, that's our. Okay.
I mean, uh, what commissioner wants to go next?
Rock, paper, scissors, Pat?
How about you go?
All right, um, last Friday, I got a tour of St. Vincent de Paul Shelter System in Eugene. So I went down there actually with my folks and we got a tour. We saw their uh, low barrier shelter system there. Actually, they're mostly low barrier. They have a, a parking uh, parking lot for RVs and managed camping. Um, tent camping. So I was able to go down, see the services they provide. Um, it was uh, very interesting and it just brings back the problem that we face here in Benton County and especially in the city of Corvallis is there's not really land for, for making these kinds of shelters. There's not the type of stuff that's available in Eugene, which was frustrating to, to see. But um, they have a great system going on down there. The groundbreaking was good. It was hot. Um, thank you to staff for providing sunscreen when I forgot and um, uh, yeah.
We remember everything.
Yeah, it's how, great. Uh, but um, it was, it was good to have um, have a good victory there. Uh, I had my DA day a few weeks ago, um, went to spend almost the whole day at the DA's office in the courthouse. Uh, saw what the deputy DAs do on a daily basis, went to four different DAs as they per um, uh, created uh, charging documents from probable cause documents and uh, felt their, just felt a little bit of their despair as they, all four charged people they, with names they had recognized who keep going through the system because there isn't a better place and a better way to, to help these folks. So all, all four of the people who got charged the day I was there had been through the system before. Um, one of the many times and had started to, uh, one of the prosecutors really wanted to see this person be able to get services and said they were so close last time, but they just fell off the map and and also got to see them prepped for a full-on trial and uh, saw the jury selection process, which is incredibly slow. But it was, it was very interesting to see. I have county college again this Thursday through Saturday, so I'll be up in Salem again for four, round four of five. I have been uh, observing our elections office as they go through the election, this elections process for the May election on May 20th. I watched them open ballots, do signature verification, all that kind of stuff. Um, it's been very fascinating, uh, and they've got it down to a, a science and they've got, I, I love asking all these gotcha questions and they have good answers for all the questions like, what do you do if this happens? What do you do if that happens? And they have a protocol for it, so they're, they're, they're excellent. I really appreciated the meetings of all of our fire chiefs. I thought that was uh, once people started talking, it was a very productive meeting uh, to have people be able to air concerns and talk about partnerships um, and uh, i- in, in this public setting. So I, I really appreciated all of our fire departments and rural fire protection districts for joining us and our chiefs for joining us and and state, the state for joining us because it was, I, I really did think it was a productive session and I'd like to see it uh, repeated next year. Just have, have everybody back and talk about things that have um, improved or changed or need to change still. Last thing I want to, yeah.
Well, and uh, it was interesting. That was a great uh, grouping uh, to have a sit-down meeting. But uh, a lot of those folks um, uh, have uh, mutual aid agreements and, and work together.
Yeah.
And so it, it really is a system, uh, I'm very familiar with the small department and, and uh, how uh, Kings Valley and how Philomath has helped us and, and State Forestry and, and their uh, generally uh, good good or very good cooperation uh, till you get to the federal level. And then that's one of the challenges.
Yes.
But uh, no, it, that was a, that was a nice, you know, grouping.
The last thing I wanted to talk about was the um, article in the Gazette Times about Unity Shelter. I wanted to bring that up um, today. Uh, I'm sure that it came to your, both of your attention that Unity Shelter says they might have to lay off 80% of their staff and close all overnight operations effective July 1. Um, I called Sean Collins to talk to him about it. Um, April Holland met with Sean yesterday morning. One, one of the, the main drivers of this seems to be the disbursement of funds that are in a bill that has not yet passed, but it's uh, after talking with Rick, it's like, it's one of the, one of the must-pass bills of the, of the session, but when it gets passed and how the numbers get moved around is, you know, that's, that's going to be a question and that's.
Federal.
Uh, state.
All state.
Yeah, 511. And so it's um, it's the question of how quickly can that money get to our departments? So staff will probably be talking to people about options or things like that. But I wanted to let you all know that I, I followed up with Sean. I called Sarah Finger McDonald's office to talk to them about it. You know, questioning to Dan Ball about what's been his experience with timetables. He recommended I call the governor's office, so I called um, Regional Solutions and Courtney there. And she is set, setting me up to meet with someone from the governor's office to talk about, um, talk about this with them about the, the timetable. Um, but I just wanted to let everybody know that I'm, you know, feel free to do whatever you feel like you need to do, but I am following this and.
Questions since you're in a little closer touch with Sean. Uh, in the Gazette Times article, it said uh, federal funding. Do we know that if Unity Shelter gets federal funding? Because it was, it was leaned towards that because I, I know they get two lines of funding that comes through the county, state funding.
Correct.
Two, two direct lines, which equals about two, two million, 2.1 million. So in the article, it, it referenced that it was connected to federal funding, which again, if they want some advocacy on the federal funding level, we, we of course, you know, they should reach out to the federal folks as well. But I don't, I don't know.
I, I suspect a lot of this is, uh, I, it's mostly all state funding. Typically, federal funding, particularly for shelters, is, is really limited, probably very turn of grants. Other primary dollars for shelters a lot comes through Oregon House of Community Services through the Community Action Agency sometime. Um, but I know that that is also state, state dollars. So I would imagine whatever federal money is in, into this is probably a very small portion.
Yep.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't think, oh, they're, okay, the federal money was the ARPA knowledge. That's what they were talking about. Yeah, that, which is. Yeah, yeah. So that, there's acting ARPA stuff, so that's, that's what they were, the federal stuff they were talking about. So yeah, that's why they're not, that, that's how we're doing. Yeah, so it's, it's pretty much just state stuff that is passed through through us. So I just, I don't feel like um, our county and specifically the city of Corvallis could um, accommodate or just have a hundred and twenty more people on the streets, which is kicked out of where their, their shelter is. So this is really important to me that I, that we, that we make sure that that doesn't happen in the interim but between when, between start of fiscal year and when the money gets dispersed. So um, yeah, this is, just wanted to let you all know that I'm, I'm following this and, and watching it closely.
Thank you.
And that is it for me.
It's that.
Yeah, uh, um, start off with the SMMP uh, process and um, like was said, our, our um, uh, current uh, effort, work, uh, worker group uh, ends basically in the uh, June and uh, um, I, I'm optimistic that we have uh, we'll have a good road map on going forward. Uh, what we don't have is, well, what, what comes next? Uh, it's possible that uh, sort of Rep Finger McDonald's you know, that's in Ways and Means for, I think, $150,000 ask. No idea how likely that is to move forward, but I do know there's got to be phase two, phase three, however you want to um, I want to call it, to use the information that we've developed. Uh, we, we've now, uh, I think, pretty well identified partners, uh, interested partners in um, moving this effort uh, going forward. Uh, basically looking past Coffin Butte and saying that it has a limited lifespan. I've been using the uh, a decade kind of uh, timeframe just because that's a convenient number and uh, gets people's attention. Oh, this isn't out there and we can uh, doze off for a, a year or two. Uh, the way I would describe it is we're behind at this point. Uh, I used Pope County Transfer Station there, Rick Real, as a model. They started in 2018 uh, developing that uh, plan. One county, one identified site, uh, and they're hoping to get it open by 2030. Uh, little quick arithmetic says that's 12 years. Uh, and 2030 isn't guaranteed. That's a, uh, like, so uh, uh, options for Coffin Butte, uh, we need to uh, develop the sense of urgency in our, ourselves and our uh, partners. I think the good news is Commissioner Cameron from Marion County is well aware of uh, the timetable, uh, especially with the incinerator closing. Uh, it's 125,000 tons a year that's available. Uh, I think they are maybe shipping at least some of that to uh, Wasco. Um, anyway, east of the mountains al- already and uh, I, I, I think we are very lucky to have Bailey Payne as uh, you know, really experienced solid waste person who has good contacts and can uh, help us with um, some of the uh, technical details. Uh, I guess the pitch is um, making sure that we have a option after July 1st. Uh, what comes next and that, that uh, hasn't been identified and it's maybe a little bit unfortunate. That's also the start of the new budget year and uh, is it accurate, Rick, that we have not uh, budgeted any uh, funding to continue this SMMP uh, discussion?
So in the proposed budget, there is a small portion of remaining funds. We obviously came in on your budget for the SMMP. Part of it was as a design, I mean, if there were a, a work that needed to be done. I think the other uh, discussion and something that's coming out of the SMMP is resolution is a solid waste management. And so specifically to solid waste. So that's something that uh, I've made sure Sean has had access uh, or at least a proposal of resources to be included. So there could be some, you know, obviously we're running right up to the end of June, so I figured there might be some additional expenses when I come through. I've had to cut them a little bit or we've recommended a small cut to those, but Sean has assured me we can, you know, operate within the dollars that we have proposed.
Okay, uh, the good news out of this, I think now we have potential partners in uh, in the state doing some work and, and our, at least uh, three other counties, uh, Lynn, Marion, Oak, uh, haven't had any substantive discussions with any of them, but there, there's some indication that uh, yes, we need to continue this discussion and it takes funding. Uh, and so I, I hope there's not too much uh, lagging between the, the current task force and whatever comes, comes next. Uh, I'm a big fan of momentum and I think we have that and I would hate to uh, lose that, lose any momentum because like I say, I, I, we're behind as far as coming up with uh, alternatives. So that's SMMP, um, I'll do transportation next. And uh, I didn't do a great job last week of uh, enlisting my colleague's support for the uh, transportation, uh, trip, transportation reinvestment plan, um, framework that's been out a month and a half.
Didn't we support that?
Uh.
We voted to support it, didn't we?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, go ahead.
And you all, you all agreed to support and then whatever form it ends up coming into to bring it back.
We, we still haven't seen the bill. It could come out today. Uh, could have come out last week. Uh, and I think that means serious discussions about details and uh, raising revenue. This really needs to be a bipartisan uh, effort and I think the reason we don't have a bill yet is there's still negotiations and.
Differing assumptions over the cost of renting a space on the Capitol Mall.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, we have a, but we haven't done a letter of support, have we?
No, we, we had talked about waiting until you actually had a physical bill, uh, because at this point, you know, there's not really anything to support inside the concept.
It's, it's close. The, the bill is close, in theory, close enough to be dropped that uh, it would make sense to uh, wait and see the, the details. Uh, I can see uh, maybe uh, the six, that's right. Right number funding streams that are in the framework. Maybe one of them goes away and a couple of them get seriously modified. Uh, but I think the good news is there will be increased dollars to local jurisdictions out of this. Uh, we have a email from Laurel Meyer uh, last week, kind of um, backing this up and uh, wanting uh, support just because it's critical to the county not getting further behind on uh, road maintenance. The county not getting further behind on uh road maintenance. And so, um, maybe a. A quick email to her that we're. Uh, in in general, uh, in support and are waiting for the actual bill to. And actually come come up with a letter of support, does that sound reasonable? And I was glad to see that, um. They're paying attention, uh, because it's it's a, it's a big deal. And a heavy lift to say, okay, let's raise uh taxes. Uh, little quick arithmetic, currently, bet counting is five point nine million uh per year. No, I'm sorry, uh, it's seven point one million per year and it was the. Trip, um, framework package was uh enacted. Uh, completely. Uh, we would get an additional five point nine million. So, I mean, it's uh significant, uh. That doesn't, it's not uh fully implemented till twenty thirty two. So that four point nine million is prorated. Uh, the gas, the twenty cent increase in the gas tax would be eight cents, uh. Um, at the first of the year and then following near forcing and then eventually add up to uh twenty cents. So that's that one, um, so stay tuned, good meet today. Uh, it's been a while, but uh. Uh, early in April, but after the goal setting, um, I went to Eugene, uh. Our Attorney General Ray Field and uh Speaker. Uh, through the House and a local state rep and Eugene had a town hall just to. Kind of their ways, well, what's going on with the federal government and what's uh. Our Attorney General um doing and and those uh. Sorts of questions, well, pretty well attended, uh, is. From a whole bunch of different viewpoints, but uh, no matter what what you're doing, uh. What's up with the federal government is of of concern, so. Dramatic pause. Uh, I had a, speaking of transportation of it, uh. Oregon, um, MPO, kind of combined Oregon MPOs, there's I think six. Corvallis and Albany or two, must be seven, uh, so quarterly we meet as a group and and. Uh, compare mainly transportation challenges and and. We tried to have an in-person meeting that would have met here and toured the Flemish uh streetscape. But uh, there wasn't enough, we used to, well, before the pandemic, it was. You either uh came in person or you weren't able to uh participate and. Since the pandemic and uh virtual meetings, people have gotten used to not traveling and so. It was, it it was all virtual, but it it was a a good idea to uh. I I I'm a fan of uh any group that meets, does a lot of remote meetings to have uh. An occasional in-person meeting, just so we have that. Uh, casual conversation kind of uh opportunities. Uh, let's see. Uh, transportation, there was a. Uh, statewide area commission on transportation, um, chairs meeting and Kaiser. Uh, towards the end of April, uh, you get to um. See what the Oregon Transportation Commission is thinking and they're the final authority on. Uh, recommending projects uh for being proved or or not, so it's nice to. Um, here. Um, from the chair and vice chair, just uh what what the. What the plan is, I I was hoping to get more detail on the transportation package. And they didn't have any more information, ODOT didn't have any more information than. Anybody else, just the legislators are working on it. Um, same day, I um met the our federal. Government relations person, Michael Skipper, uh, I wasn't able to meet him here, but he met uh. Where it was in Kaiser and we had a nice um. Chat about DC and uh, like I said, everybody's interested in what's uh the federal government's up to. And I think it's helpful to have, you know, uh, somebody who has some experience. Um, um, uh, dealing with the federal government and agencies and uh with all the. With a lot of things in influx. Uh. We have, uh, speaking of the Flemish speed state, we the. Um, our three county uh uh area commission on transportation had a. Um, meeting here and then toured the Flemish streetscape and then. Uh, I've driven through it a bunch of times and really walked the whole thing, got the. History, it started in, speaking of project timeline, started in oh eight and finished in twenty twenty four. Uh. And they were really glad to get that. Uh, done and 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 I think uh it'll make a difference in downtown Flemish. It it uh makes it appealing, they have benches, um, I think it will be. Uh, a boon to economic development in the uh downtown core, it's just uh. It's different than having a highway uh run through bike pass benches, um, parks. Uh, and it from uh. Where it's milled down origins to uh trying to, you know, be more. Retail and people oriented, I I think we've uh. Uh, done a nice job. A couple of things from. Salem, uh. May first, uh, I was invited by O X E extension to testify in front of the Ways and Means. Committee as part of the O S U um budget um process and uh. Learned a few things and I'm, I I've on the tree farm benefited greatly from O S U extension and always glad to. Uh. Tell folks about that and that experience and, um, what a good job they do. And then last Friday, I was thinking I was gonna testify and. Turns out I wasn't signed up, uh, and they actually had over a hundred people testify and. I stayed there the whole.
Friday you didn't testify?
Uh, uh, the written testimony was in place. Um, not sure what happened, we talked to, um, let Zach know what happened and he said he would. Check it out and he hasn't gotten back from you, so there was some kind of screw up.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry too.
Yes, I didn't really, that's unacceptable.
I appreciate you going and I, yeah, that's.
And I know you missed another event.
Exactly, and I felt so bad that you had to miss that because that's you've been like talking about like every meeting, like, what are we gonna do this?
Yeah, so. Well, at least we did it, so.
Yeah.
That's that's.
We can do a tour though, I'm sure, we'd like to make that available to you so you're able to.
As a tree farmer, I've seen dirt before.
Yeah, it is a lot of dirt.
Yeah, I, yeah, that was, uh, yeah. I I I did learn and uh. I got my notes, uh, well, they were very efficient, which uh was appreciated. They, there was no time lag coming up and shuffling, um. A hundred, did they get a hundred? Pretty close, two minutes, uh, and there there was ten seconds delay between. When you quit and the next person started and. Uh, I I think that's a good model for all testimony, because a a lot of times they run out of time and. Uh, there there's more shuffling than um traumatic pauses in. Um, testimony, so. Uh, well, a lot of cities, uh, infrastructure, wastewater, water, uh. And we really should do something about that, because uh, just like with Adair. Uh, the scale of the project is out of scale with the community and. It didn't uh, didn't matter. Well, except for Port of Portland asking for forty million, uh, most of the asks were uh pretty reasonable. Uh, there there were some, uh. Homeless uh shelter kind of asked, but the majority, and and I guess it makes sense, capital, this is the capital. Construction uh subcommittee of waste. So it it wasn't a complete waste, but uh.
Getting a call from.
Uh, anyway, tha- that was, uh. I was very patient and couldn't quite figure out, you know, they call six people at a time and. Oh, no, didn't make that shakes, uh, didn't make that shakes, uh, uh, oh, the. The good news, I I tried to salvage what I could, uh, I saw, um. President Wagner, uh, probably heading to the bathroom and so I ambushed him and.
In bathroom?
Before he got, before he got there, left the record.
For the record.
In the hall, in the lobby, in the lobby and uh, which this was. Towards the end and then they said, okay, that's it, that's everybody and so he uh was taking a break and said, I mean, I. Thought I signed up and he said, well, you got twenty seconds to make a pitch for uh Jackson Frazier and uh. I I didn't think, I didn't do very well, I I should have said, who do I, who do you think I am, Dan Rayfield? But uh, uh, but I I did a okay job explaining the the. Uh, benefits of the project, but uh, that was, that was the best I could do. Uh, yeah, well, somewhere something got dropped and I.
We'll get, we'll we'll get to bottom of it, okay?
I think that's it.
Thank you. Great, hello, hi, um, as everyone has mentioned, we've all attended several things together. Um, the tree planting was fun and I did learn a lot about trees and so we got to go out and actually, you know, spend some time at um. North Albany Park, which is nice, I like getting out all the different areas in Benton County.
Did you have more time finding it?
No, I've been there before, yeah.
It it's, I mean, it's fairly large, but it's.
Yeah, you go down like a, it just looks like a side road to like, you know, oh, there's gonna be four houses down here and then all of a sudden you're coming around into a park, so. Yeah, nice, um, so yeah, that was, we got the Linden tree and that was nice, um. You know, I've been doing all my my normal meeting with all the mayors and city councilors and the DA and sheriff every month. Um. Yesterday, I was in person at Salem, I actually had the opportunity to go in person versus virtual, so did the. Tree development and transportation, A O C Eastern Committee meeting in person, that's nice, and legislative meetings. Um, so it's good to see people and have those side conversations and. Learn things and build relationships that you kind of miss out on everything's virtual. Um, I didn't participate in the courageous conversations along with many other of our staff and. And administrator and Commissioner Shepard, um, that was a good experience and I. Highly recommend if anyone gets the chance to do that, I'd recommend doing it. Um, yes, the courthouse, like we've mentioned, I talked to Jeff something, he seems like he's in charge. And he offered to give us all a tour again, which I think would be great, um, because. I think so, yeah, um. It's cool to see, I mean, they actually have like the, it like the plots like lined out and. And I saw Brian Lee over there, I mean, he was just like, he spent like five minutes just sort of like visualizing, you know, it was great. Um, so to get.
The E O C.
Yeah, yeah, he was off, kind of, doing his thing, so I think that would be worthwhile for all of us to do. Uh, whenever it works for them to schedule that, um, I thought the bed and breakfast went well. It seemed like they enjoyed it, um, good prizes, as I mentioned. We had our legislative breakfast, us commissioners went to the Salmon and Jazz event, the Flemish Rovers were put on, yep. Always a good event, um. Next week, I will be at the Western Interstate Conference, um, Western Interstate Region Conference, which affiliated with. Naco, the National Association of Counties, um, advocating for public policy issues affecting counties in the West. So, as you probably all know, this is a, this is, I I like this group, I feel like it's the gap in between A and C. Naco, like Naco is just too big and A O C is great for Oregon, but sometimes there's big issues that affect. You know, everyone in the West, but those, we have different, different issues than in the East. I'll, I will be happy to be at that meeting, I will be missing the Tuesday meeting, so Pat, you are up as chair next Tuesday.
Happy election day.
Yeah, there you go. Um. I think that's all I have, so. Uh, yeah, anything else for the good of the order?
Well, this is the bed and breakfast, I think. Oh, Debbie said this was the biggest attendance ever and and it's. Really been scaling up, um, as far as people attending. Uh. Yeah, and. A lot of work went in, I mean, all the prizes, I asked Debbie about it, well, we got. I mean, the the range of prizes was pretty amazing and and, oh, I did, um, so, um. I think she, she enjoys that and is good at it, uh, one thing I had was, um. Hmm, oh, then I think it was from Mariah, a NAPE. Or. Uh, of the parks and which one?
June thirteenth or fourteenth, June thirteenth.
Oh, yeah, we were, that's right, we were waiting on your, uh, and then we're gonna.
It's tied.
And.
What would commissioners prefer? Do you want to talk about it right now or do you want to send in your? Did you send it your?
Yes, but.
We'll send it.
But if.
Who's on my list today?
Salem all day.
I I. If if the, I thought, well, maybe we can do that, next time, look at the list and say, well. I really, really want to, but I, you know, uh, on paper, it's it's not. You don't get some of the nuances of, uh. How much you wanted for this one versus this one, kind of a deal, but, um.
And I was leaning towards the ones in the south, like there were two in the south and those piqued my interest, but I'm happy to go to any.
That's what I did too, because I I did not choose, um. I did not choose, is it Finley or Jackson Frazier? I don't.
Well, uh, Jackson.
I would assume Jackson Frazier, yeah, I did not choose Jackson Frazier or Fitton Green, because I'm like, I I had been. I would assume Jackson Fraser. Yeah. I did not choose Jackson Fraser or Fitton Green because I'm like, I, I had been to those places. So.
Same. I, I mean, and I've been to these other places too, but not as much. And I think the cemetery really interested me because there's a lot I don't know about it. So.
Uh, I, I did the north tour, the Jackson Fraser, just because we're, uh, working hard to get the funding and have a discussion about what it is now, what the, what the future could mean. But, uh, uh, that's, they're all good. Uh.
Commissioners, I believe there is, uh, my understanding to be a text here is that there is another opportunity this Friday for capital construction for virtual.
So, yeah, uh, last Friday they did no virtual. It was all in, in person.
And so it sounds like they are carrying it over.
Yeah.
We can talk some more.
Okay, but what's happening on Friday? Nope. Ironically, I'm insane.
Sounds like Pat's on it, so.
Cause I was also thinking about Osborne again, because I do it less. Anyways, sorry.
Okay.
Ryan Dawson, Osborne.
Great. And they have lots of.
And, yeah, plenty, mostly kids, coaches.
Someone sent me a picture.
Thanks. Right, well, I think with that we can go ahead and adjourn at eleven thirty-two AM.